Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call the Jackson Public School District Board Meeting to order. We'd like to hear the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Gary Hanna, Assistant Superintendent Area Three.
Good evening, Board Members. Dr. Murray, I have the honor of today of introducing a scholar from Johnson Elementary. This is Charlie Davis III. I mean, the fourth is the proud scholar of Jackson Public Schools. He's a fourth grade student at Johnson Elementary School. He's known for his academic pride. The school is known for its academic pride and integrity, led by Principal Faith Strong. Charlie loves his school principal and teachers. He's an honor roll scholar and participates in a range of activities which include recreational and select league baseball and basketball. This summer Charlie led his baseball team, the Florence Eagles, to victory in the 2017 USSSA State Baseball Tournament. Also, he enjoys attending Jackson State University football games, family events, and any and everything related to band. Charlie is a member of the Solid Rock International Ministries, pastored by Dr. Ted G. Watson. Charlie's parents are Charlie Davis III and Morgan Davis.
Good evening.
My name is Charlie Davis IV. Will you please stand with me to recite the Pledge of Allegiance? Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Charlie, thank you so much and appreciation. We're going to have a certificate for you in this bag. Thank you, young man.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Always love to see our youth at the board meetings with their parents and community members. We'll now have a moment of inspiration from Mr. Pedro Gallion. Mr. Pedro Gallion, and please correct your name for me when you come forward, is the Assistant Pastor over Youth Administration and Music at Ebenezer Apostolic Ministries. He maintains an active schedule as a minister, voice instructor, director, musician, soloist, and advisor in the ministerial and choral areas. He's the Director of Choral Activities at Murrah High School. Under his leadership, the Murrah Concert Singers have won numerous awards on the district's state and national levels. In 2010, the choir competed in Orlando, Florida, beating almost 300 other choirs. Upon winning this and other festivals, the choir received an official invitation from Heritage Festivals to compete and perform at Carnegie Hall in New York City, New York, April of 2012, and St. Bartholomew's Cathedral in 2014. Currently, the choir has completed the 2013, 14, and 15 years of competition with all superior ratings and invitations to honor choir festivals throughout the United States, Canada, Germany, and Austria. In the 2016-17 school year, the Murrah Singers won the World Strides Heritage Festival in Atlanta, Georgia, and was invited to Los Angeles Festival of Gold in 2017. Mr. Gallion is married to the lovely Mrs. Tanisha D. Gallion. They have two daughters, Anaya, Christina, and Pierce Nicole, and one son, Parker Alexander. Please welcome Mr. Gallion, Assistant Pastor at Ebenezer Apostolic Ministries.
We'd like to say good evening to the board and good evening to everyone. I am a proud teacher of Jackson Public Schools, and it is my honor to be here tonight to share with you a moment of inspiration. Just a thought into your hearing that says, "Life is not about waiting for the storm to pass, but learning to dance in the rain." Life is not about waiting for the storm to pass, but learning to dance in the rain. Just a simple thought to remind us that even through the ordeals that our district has faced, the Jackson Public School District is a family. We stand together in the strength of knowing that there is strength in numbers. We stand together in knowing that even in the midst of the tests and the trials that we have had to face, that one psalmist puts it the way, he says, "Weeping may endure for a night, but joy comes in the morning." During times of transition, during times of adversity, we've got to learn how to keep the right attitude, how to remain positive, and how to dance in the rain. Now, that is sometimes easier said than done, but we must remember that any times that we look at our adversity and we look at our tribulations, all of these things come to make us stronger. And so if we would keep our eye on the prize, and the prize is that we are here to educate children, we are for children, Jackson Public Schools, we are building stronger schools together. And the key word tonight is "together," so that's what gives us the strength to carry on and to dance in the rain, knowing that the weeping and the troll and the trouble will only endure for a night, but that the morning is still coming. We want to encourage you with that thought. Lastly, as we make ready to transition from that, serving as the Director of Choirs at Murrah High School, we are in the midst of a wonderful time for these children again for traveling internationally on the level, to travel to Italy to represent our city and state. And we want to share just a little bit with you about that as well. We have one of our students who is a section leader to share with that briefly tonight.
My name is Sophia Bowley, and I am the soprano section leader at Murrah High School of our concert choir. So I'm going to share some information about our upcoming trip this year. So as has been said last year, Murrah was granted, we went to the Riverland Choral Festival in Pearl, Mississippi, and we were lucky enough to become the grand champions of that competition. From there, we were afforded the opportunity to go to Los Angeles and compete in the Festival of Gold, where we got ranked all superiors. And then lastly, this year, we have been given the opportunity to travel to Italy and share our music even broader, represent our entire city and our state. There are many ways that, we will need your support, obviously. This trip costs over $3,000 for each student, and there's about 50 of us. So we are starting up our $100,000 campaign. So there are multiple ways that you can give. We're asking for at least 500 individuals, organizations, or businesses to give $200, or of course, like, we'll accept however amount that you will be willing to give us. There are multiple ways that you can give. You can write a check to Mustang Choir Booster Club, or you can go to our GoFundMe page. If you just search on Safari or Google Mustang Choir Italy, it'll be the first link that pops up. And again, we appreciate all of your support and have a great meeting.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate you and your efforts to serve our children in the district through the Murrah Choir. Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
And we encourage everyone to donate.
Mr. Gallion, hold on one second.
We need to establish a quorum. We have six board members here. I believe we have established a quorum. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I hear a call for any additions or discussion around the agenda?
I so move.
Were you going to say something, Ann?
I was going to make a recommendation that we add a discussion of the Bailey Group contract to the agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We, I'm not sure if that required a move in a second.
Those you just need to specify were on the agenda you'd like to do.
Great, thank you. On the, what would be appropriate, the Information Action, Ann, or where are we? Following the superintendent's report?
I think that would be appropriate.
Thank you all in favor of adding a further discussion of the Bailey Group contract to the agenda under the Information Action items. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Are there any other discussions of the agenda? I move that we adopt the agenda as written with the inclusion of the further discussion of the Bailey Group contract under Item Nine, Information Action Items.
Second.
Thank you. Oh, well, we moved that and approved it. Thank you. Did we not?
Well, if you want it shown in the minutes, that way we can show that the item was the adoption of the agenda with the addition.
With the addition. Thank you. That's what you were seconding. Thank you, Dr. Luckett. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. It's approved. The reading and approving of the minutes, and the minutes were distributed to us, they were not distributed to us.
You don't have any for this board meeting.
And you actually, you have 30 days to approve them, so they weren't distributed right.
Okay. 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 Thirty days. Thank you for our esteemed legal counsel to keep the chair informed. Item Five, Public Participation for General Comments and/or Proposed Policy Issues. Do we have public?
I don't have anyone who's signed up to address you this evening.
Great, thank you. Hearing none, we'll move to Item Six, the Review of Discipline Cases.
We have no discipline cases for review tonight.
Hearing none, we will move to Item Seven, the Superintendent's Report and/or Announcements, particularly the CAP update.
President, Board Members, Community, good evening. We have a few, a couple of announcements tonight. First of all, we, last week at our board meeting, we announced that the Council of Great City Schools would be coming to conduct a strategic support visit, and they are in the district. They've been here since Sunday conducting that strategic support visit. So we'll, some of you all have spoken with them, and we'll be providing an update when that process is complete, but just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board and let you know that more information will be forthcoming. As always with our board meetings, we would like to provide an update on the CAP and take a bit of a deeper dive as requested by the board tonight. Dr. Merritt will come forward. We also have with us tonight the Bailey Group that will be able to provide some information as well. I'd also like to acknowledge our standard leaders. If all of our standard leaders could please stand for me. Thank you all. These are, can we give these individuals a round of applause? These are the individuals that are doing the work, that surrounds this corrective action plan, and they are working each and every day to make sure that we have a quality plan to present to the Mississippi Department of Education in January. So at this time, Dr. Merritt will provide an update.
All right. Good evening to Dr. Murray, Dr. Harriston, Board of Trustees. My report will be a little bit brief this evening. At this time, we do have a completed draft of the CAP, and you have most of the standards that have been revised or reviewed. We have received from Ms. Moore with the Bailey Group, some very detailed feedback as it relates to some suggestions of what we need to make in order to monitor compliance and in order for the CAP to meet the standard. All standard leaders have been provided and received that feedback. So our timeline is as follows. Of course, it is our goal for you, to bring you an approved, or bring the CAP in its final form, for you to approve on December the 19th. And so our timeline is as follows. On tomorrow, we will have a standard leader meeting where we will discuss some revisions to some specific standards that need to take place and just take a deep dive on some things that we need to address. On Thursday, December the 7th, we will schedule individual meetings with the Bailey Group and standard leaders to review some standards in detail to just make sure that we have our monitoring instruments are accurate, we have artifacts if necessary, and just make sure that the monitoring of each standard and compliance is taking place. And on Friday, we hope to have, we will have a completed CAP that we will review and hopefully get uploaded for your approval for the December, the second meeting in December. Just know we're operating with a sense of urgency. This is something, of course, that we take seriously and that we want to ensure that our district is in a good position when we, once the CAP is approved and we begin to call MDE out to monitor for compliance. Dr. Murray, that's all I have at this time.
At this time, Mrs.
Excuse me, Dr. Murray, can we ask Dr. Merritt questions now or?
Yes, well, we have a couple more pieces to the report.
I know, but I wanted to.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Oh, of course. Oh, yes, ma'am. Uh-huh.
Thank you. Dr. Merritt, when is our report due to MDE? What is the exact date?
Our report is due to the Mississippi Department of Education, the Accreditation Department, on January 16th.
January 16th.
And it will go for state board approval on February 15th. Pending an approved CAP, we will begin, of course, with the monitoring and implementation. We feel comfortable with some standards. We will be able to call the Mississippi Department out to do some immediate monitoring for compliance.
Okay, so January 16th, we must submit it to MDE, and it will be approved or not on February 15th?
Yes, ma'am.
And between the 16th and the 15th, there's no communication between, I just understand the process, between the district and MDE?
So the department will take that time to review it as we submitted it as in an entire document. They will distribute it among program offices for them to review and to provide feedback and tell us if there is some changes that need to take place during that period of time.
So you would have an opportunity to make changes between that time and February 15th?
Yes, ma'am, if needed. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. Any board have questions with Dr. Merritt immediately? Thank you.
I'm Gary Bailey with Bailey Education Group. Normally, Pat Ross would be here making this presentation to you, and his wife had surgery today, and he is taking adequate care of her. So I know y'all won't understand that, and I'll try to fill in. Ann Moore is going to talk to you here in a second, but I wanted to make just a few short comments. Number one, thank you for allowing us to be involved in your CAP plan. I can tell you that this district is very important to us. I'm a proud alumni of Jackson Public Schools, attending Witten, Peoples, Jim Hill, and Wingfield. So I care very much about this district as we do about all of our clients, so we take it very seriously. We appreciate the relationship. We've been actively involved, and Ann's going to go through a report for you, but we asked Dr. Murray for permission to make a report to you at our own expense. This is time we spent that has nothing to do with our contract with you, to give you some suggestions and ideas of what the most important things this district needs to do in the first hundred days of your administration as a board. And that's what Ann's going to go over with you. I have a handout, it's just a page and a half, it's very short and brief. We'll be glad to talk about anything you want to talk about, but we wanted you to hear from us, where we think you are, and some opportunities to take you to a much higher level. You've got a great district, you've got many things great going on. These are opportunities to really take it to the next level, and so that's what we're here to do tonight. I want to thank you for that opportunity. Ann's going to make their report. Also introduce Kelly Scoggan. Kelly is my partner, who has been very actively involved in this as well. So if you would grab one.
Who is Kelly Scoggan?
Kelly Scoggan. Raise your hand, Kelly.
Thank you.
But we'll be available for questions, so I'm going to turn it over to Ann if that's okay with y'all.
Thank you.
Good evening. So glad to be here. Just a little background information, when we started working with the district back in April of 2017, and we came in and hit the ground running pretty hard in looking at the citations on record, the corrective action plan that was being implemented by the district, and had provided continuous feedback since April about the district's progress. And those reports were provided, weekly summary reports were provided to the district, as well as periodic overall summary reports were provided to the district. We presented to the previous board on several occasions concerning the progress being made and the next steps and challenges facing the district. Right now, our work has shifted to this new corrective action plan, as Dr. Merritt mentioned. I'm so glad the standard leaders are here tonight because they do the real work in the district every day, and they have worked diligently to get the first draft. And based on that initial review, we have made extensive suggestions to be much more specific about the exact strategies that have already been implemented in the district and also to address the additional strategies that will help the district reach full compliance. What Gary mentioned to you is a brainstorming activity with leadership with Bailey Group that made very specific succinct recommendations on what you should be doing now to coordinate your resources and prioritize those services that directly infect instruction and also some operational recommendations. Looking about midway down on the instructional actions that number.
What document are you in?
Just pass.
Okay.
Gary, you passed that around? Everybody have that? Okay, yes. The first and most important area to address is the data. The data drives the instruction. Recommendation is to perform a data analysis, determine which schools' grades and subjects in targeted areas should receive the most intensive support. A second recommendation is to reevaluate the in-district testing schedule to minimize that time spent on testing and maximize the instructional time. Second area is teachers. As you all know, there's a serious teacher shortage, a lack of certified teachers, and a large number of long-term substitutes in the classrooms. So our first recommendation there is to provide immediate and ongoing support for all long-term substitutes in the classrooms in the targeted areas. And that's based on your data review from the first item. Okay? Every classroom must have a certified teacher or support or a teacher coach in all the targeted areas. Another suggestion is to reach out to multiple external partners to help you accomplish Also looking to reassign all licensed personnel who are not serving in a classroom right now to targeted area classrooms and accomplish that by at least the first week of January to maximize your instructional support. On the next page at the top, we also recommend that the district request from the MDE to provide all available reading interventionists. Also, request the Calog Foundation, Barksdale Reading Institute, and all available partners to use the resources available to provide instructional interventionists to those targeted And Item E, utilize technology which will allow quality classroom teachers to be recorded and used as models with long-term substitutes. And there are a number of examples that we could go over that in more detail later. Also, have a laser-like focus on those instructional supervision activities, and that's your administrators in the classroom supporting teachers every day. The third area is the learning environment. Again, laser-like focus on the current discipline policy and hold everyone accountable for enforcing that school-wide. Increase the presence of your school resource officers at targeted area schools where needed. Expand the use of positive behavior supports in all schools and focus on rewarding students for positive behavior daily. Any questions?
Does the board have any questions?
That's just the instructional piece.
Oh, well, so would you like questions an hour later?
So the other area deals with the operational actions, some very specific things that we're recommending that the board begin developing a new strategic plan which reflects the vision of the new board. Also evaluate the current district organizational chart and perform an efficiency study to gauge the necessity of multiple layers of personnel. Perform a personnel audit of all schools to identify areas of possible consolidation of classes and job descriptions. And then reorganize the offices which directly affect classroom instruction to reflect a more linear and strategic approach to the classroom supports. Develop a short-range and long-range plan for the closing and consolidation of schools with less than 200 students. Develop an evaluation too, which measures the effectiveness of all external partners.
Thank you for that summary report. I do have a few questions, but I'll yield the floor to my colleagues first who might have questions or comments.
I have a couple of questions. In the data section, the very first point recommends a data analysis to determine which schools' grades and subjects targeted areas should receive the most intense support. Has this not yet been done?
Yes. It's been done.
And what are we seeing?
What's the data saying?
Well, the data, you know, we still have challenges in our middle schools. You know, there are, there are, there is some very specific areas that we need focus, but specifically in math, it's a critical area. The map showed that, and formative data shows that as well. But middle schools, it's a challenge, and mostly because of the teachers not having, we think, you know, again, we've not done an evaluation of that to know specifically, but we think that it's because of the shortage of not having a math teacher or a certified ELA teacher. That directly impacts what happens in the classroom. So, but yes, we are data-rich, we have the data, but we've actually worked, last week, there's a report that, a LOOK report, where we analyze the data in buildings that is available in many of our schools. All of our principals have access to the formative data through the COACH system, and we have, of course, the summative reports from the test that we'll have coming up in a couple of weeks. That information will be captured by our research office and provided. So we do have data that tells us specifically where our issues are, but that's constant, that's ever-changing. And so we need to not just have the data, but understand what to do with the data.
To follow up, and your response too, it's exactly right, that data constantly changes. We've been doing this with the Bailey District since April, gathering this data, and I'm And I'm concerned that we need that data before us now to do any of this. I appreciate being concerned about our 100 days moving forward, but I'm also equally as concerned about our previous 100 days. If we've collected the data, we know it's middle school. I'm presuming you can identify the schools, the grade, the teachers. If we have the data, when will we put a pin in it to stop and learn what the data says so that we can plan strategically? I'm just concerned that we're not doing what we can do now with what we have. Because in order to prescribe anything to do in the future, you must know what you're doing now. And I'm very concerned about the deadlines that we face.
Excuse me, Dr. Harrison, if I can respond. We have two different contracts with Bailey, and I just want to just provide some clarity. The contract that we've been working on since April has been, or under, has been the contract for support specifically with the corrective action plan. Currently, we have several consultants working in the district on the instructional side. So I just want to make sure that we are clear that we have two existing contracts with Bailey, one being with the corrective action plan and the other being with the instructional support.
Are those two contracts aligned? Or are they just totally separate?
They're totally separate.
So the work that one contract with Bailey is doing is not aligned with or connected to understanding the work on the other contract?
Well, they have, they have different purposes. We contracted with Bailey in April specifically to support the work of the corrective action plan. We issued an R, well, several RFPs for support in instructional areas. Standard 20, which, you know, really, everything is a part of the work of the cap. But standard, standard 20 specifically, we submitted, releasing RFP in Bailey, I think it was awarded that RFP out of several groups. We had another RFP specifically for math, which the data identified. Another company, I think Green and Associates, was awarded that contract. So there are, as Dr. Merritt mentioned, specifically for the corrective action plan and dealing with the technical pieces of the corrective action plan, that is one contract. And then the data piece and those other pieces are something separate that we look at through the instructional pieces and then internally. So they are, they're interwoven, but they're, they're different contracts. I think the contract that we approved last week was for, specifically for the corrective action plan, providing specific support for the corrective action plan.
I appreciate that. But everything in the correction, corrective action plan, isn't that designed to support student learning and teacher support?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anyone here tonight who can speak to the, who's handling the instructional part of the contract? Or that, you don't, okay, had you planned to speak to that tonight? We don't have to hear it now, I want to finish with this person, but I just want to know.
No, I'd be happy to address. The corrective action plan is around multiple standards, some directly with the instructional piece and some not. So standard 20, we were contracted for 100 days beginning around October, and we just finished 100 days of work in five middle schools, which would be 20 days per school. For leadership, eight English language arts teacher coaching, and eight math, for a total of 100 days in that very short period of time, to deal with the data at the school level. So in order to measure the growth and progress as a result of those 100 days, you would have to monitor the data that will be coming in here pretty soon, your next testing window for your code assessment, and then also your STAR data assessment. And so your research team, your data team at the district level could speak to the effectiveness of that particular project, the 100 days. And then we would need to link that data back to the specific teachers that we worked with. So, I'm sorry.
Go on.
So how do these all work together? Basically, the 100 days were to provide support for standard 20, which deals with the instructional piece, which, which was just a fraction of what needs to take place for your schools across the district, which goes back to the 100 days. If we were in your position and, and we could accomplish everything in a perfect world, what would that 100 days be around? And that would be around taking the data that you have currently, not just the MAAP data from the spring, but all of your data. Triangulate that data to determine where can we get the greatest lift in the shortest period of time.
And when will we hear the results of that data collection and analysis that's coming in?
When your window closes at some point, your district will be able to speak to that specifically. And we will, in the near future, we've already had conversations, and Mr. Ross has been in conversations with your district-level area superintendents and Dr. Merritt to schedule that meeting to analyze the data, to have those conversations.
Can either you or the district administrative staff give us an idea of a date when we could hear the analysis of the data?
I could not, Dr. Merritt may could.
We, we mentioned last week that, of course, we will take a summative assessment in December, and that data will be, it's through a program called ATI. And so we'll have that information when we return. And so over the, over the winter break, that information will be analyzed. And our department, Dr. Sargent and I actually met today, that information will be put into a format by which we can present it to you at the first or second meeting in January.
But I can tell you.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
So we won't have any data gathered from the work with the teachers and staff in our schools over this fall semester until the second week in January?
No, we have data, we have.
Analyze data, summarize, put in a report that you can give to the board so we will understand the work that has been accomplished and the work that needs to be done.
Yes, we have, we've taken four formative assessments, and that data is available, again, in the system for principals. We can capture that data and put it in a format so that for the board, if you all would like that information.
What I'm suggesting, it needs to be put in a format for your, for the district to understand, for the team. If we're talking about planning remedies to address deficiencies that start in January, our children start school in January, teachers report to work in January, I am very concerned that we don't have anything to give them to show that this is what we did with y'all, this is what we tried, this is what the results are, these are our findings, this is what we recommend moving forward.
Well, we have that on a daily basis. That's available in schools.
Will you share it with the board?
Yes, that's what I'm asking. We can provide that information for you. Because what, what schools have, we have data meetings on a weekly basis. These are, you know, our focus instructional team meetings where we look at the data. The data is available, as soon as a test is complete, then the data is in the system and can be generated in a format whereby it can, it can help make instructional decisions. And so that data is available. Again, we can provide that data to the board, you know, upon your request.
Duly request it as soon as possible, could have that in the record. We need to know what's going on in our schools. We cannot make decisions on a hope and a prayer. We need to see what's happening. And we can't do our job without knowing what's going on in the schools. Oh, boy. Let me ask my colleagues to say a little bit more, I don't want to get too in the weeds, but.
I do have a question, Madam President. And so if we have this data that can be specific to the work that Bailey has done, can we get it assessed so that we can use it as a tool to also assess the work that Bailey has done for us?
Thank you.
Because if they've worked with specific schools and specific teachers, can we then not track the success of those students to the work that Bailey has done for us?
Yes.
Absolutely.
And can we get that information as soon as possible as well?
Yes, we can provide that information.
Were the schools that you worked in identified by the data as the ones that were in the most need to have intervention?
That would be a question for Dr. Merritt specifically. We were given the five schools that we would be serving and working with.
Five schools?
Mm-hmm, five middle schools, 20 days each.
Is that replicable to our other schools? Do we have, do we have capacity to do what you all did in five schools with more than five? No, I'm asking Dr. Merritt.
Okay, so as Dr. Murray stated earlier, we did two RFPs, both were for 100 days. Bailey, what we did, we, in order to focus the work, to get better support and hopefully better results, instead of doing 10 schools 10 days, we did five schools 20 days so that we could have more of an instructional impact. So the five schools that were selected, being that middle school is the, that's a division that really needs the most support. We looked at the data and we provided the support to those middle schools that were in the most need. Then we also, with the other consulting group, they provided support, and I think out of the, all of the middle schools that are rated below D have some type of instructional support from one or the other consulting group.
Based on their particular need?
Yes.
Yes, based on the data.
What were the main subject areas that we're working with?
So Green focused specifically on math. Bailey focused on ELA and math.
Great, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. We did five middle schools, 20 days. Could you just give a brief of what the additional 20 days that were approved last week? What would happen in those 20 days?
So the additional 20 days that were approved last week is not for instructional support, it's for corrective action plan support. So that, that is focused strictly on working with the corrective action plan.
Okay. And, well, can you give us a brief of what would happen in those 20 days on the corrective action plan?
Yes, we were, we were working feverishly last week on very tight timelines. I think I got the first draft at 8:45 one night and started reading it late that night because we had a meeting scheduled in less than 48 hours to go over all the recommendations. And that was just the first batch of the standards that had been drafted. I got additional standards over the weekend and continued that review. We have met at length with Dr. Merritt on those recommendations to make the strategies for corrective action to be succinct, clear, very specific about who is going to do what when, or in some cases, what has already been done. So tomorrow, we're going to meet with the standard leaders in a group and go over the general information and make sure everyone has gotten on the same page in how the strategies need to be addressed in a corrective action. And then starting the next day, we're going to be working one-on-one to rewrite those standards. Also, part of the days in that contract, of those 20 days, were also some days set aside specifically just for this exceptional education office. We've been working continuously, daily, monitoring the exceptional education data for child count and for teacher unit funding for the district. And that's, we have a separate Bailey consultant that is lasered in on that particular piece. We also, and that's Ellen Burnham. We also have another Bailey consultant, Susan Andrews, who is a longtime former MDE who retired from the Office of Accreditation, who is also, in addition to myself, reviewing the standards and the citations and the drafted corrective actions to make sure that what we, what the district puts together is going to pass when it gets to the board for approval and to the MDE for review. So we're doing daily intensive work and we may run out of 20 days, but we're not going to stop working. Yes.
That was my next question.
Yes, yes. We may burn up half those days before Christmas.
You're doing eight-hour, 20 days?
Yes, ma'am.
If, if board members wanted to observe the process that you're using, is that possible?
Certainly, board members could attend the standard leader meetings tomorrow at 2 o'clock here, absolutely. And you'll hear some of the specific direction that I, that I will advise and guide them on how to write a very specific strategic action plan that addresses the citation and to help the district get compliant. I think there's been a lot of confusion about corrective actions and there's been a lot of information in the press about the corrective actions. In the original corrective action plan, the majority of the corrective actions were to review policies, revise policies, develop policies, provide training, develop procedures, provide technical assistance and supports to the staff to implement those policies and procedures. So the district did a really good job on that piece. The disconnect is implementing successfully, continuously, and having the supporting documentation that verifies compliance. That's the hard part. And, and the bigger you are, the more difficult it is for everyone to get it right every day.
Thank you. So in terms of our policies, I see this work as, it sort of flows. If your policy's right, then more than likely your procedure will be right and so forth. How are we looking in terms of our policies being approved by MDE?
Okay, we are addressing all the specific citations in the report with lead counsel and making the necessary revisions. I believe most of those have been done.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, but in terms of MDE approval, do we know how many have been cleared by MDE?
We don't. We have not asked for approval of standard one yet. So we don't know how many have been cleared or anything like that at this point. Didn't one of our documents say that some of the standards, that we were in compliance? Highlighted in blue, I didn't see that?
Yeah, but I don't know that we were cited on those.
Okay, that's, that's why they showed up, but, okay, just put it in there.
Board members, if I can just make one interjection. If you do all decide to attend the meetings with the Bailey Group, can I, can I ask that you do it solely in an observance role? Because, because if you go and it's more than a quorum and you start participating, then we have the issue of whether or not it becomes a public meeting that the public has to be invited to. So you can go, and if you just want to sit back and observe, maybe hold your questions to later on. But if you would just be observant of the fact that we would advise you not take an active role or start running it such that their concerns as to whether or not it becomes a public meeting that has to be noticed and members of the public have to be enabled to attend.
I have just two more questions to help me understand MDE process. When they come to do an accreditation visit, does the district set up an evidence room where they visit and they go through documents? And do school districts or superintendents have that in their local sites? Are we training?
Typical, typical MDE monitoring process, and I did that for 30 years, either in the Office of Accreditation or the Office of Special Education, back and forth in different roles there. Typically, yes. In this particular case, Dr. Murray, you weren't even noticed on most of the occasions. MDE staff just showed up, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Do we have any reason why or just out of procedure?
I cannot, I retired four years ago, so I do not know how they changed their methods on just showing up.
We communicated that.
I just want to note the timeline. Penning the board-approved cap on February 15th by the State Board of Education, the process that has been outlined by the Office of Accreditation is that we complete a form at this time, at that time after February 15th. is that we complete a form at this time, at, at that time after February fifteenth and request the program office to come out and monitor the standard for, for clearance or for compliance. So, that process will begin after February fifteenth. There will be no monitoring during the process of the composing of the corrective action plan, if that makes sense.
So, that again, there'll be no monitoring of the, repeat, I just want to make sure.
There will be no monitoring from the MDE of standards while we are currently writing the corrective action plan, being that we are still requesting technical assistance with, with some standards.
And we will have notice before they come out because we'll request that they come out after the fifteenth. So, the process, that process has been very clear. They've been working with us. We have clear lines of communication open on that process.
Yes, sir.
So, we should not expect any unexpected visits?
No, ma'am. It's been, the process has been very well outlined.
Are there standards that are ready to be cleared today?
I think we, we have some that have, we've been working on and we have the artifacts and evidence in place to be cleared.
This is a question for Dr. Moore. Is, if, is, could we invite MDE out now to clear standards that are ready to be cleared?
What, what has been the direction from the Office of Accreditation on that?
The, the office has, has noted and stated and provided in writing that the process is after February fifteenth, twenty eighteen, we can make the request for them to come and monitor compliance. They will provide very, very valuable feedback during TA sessions to let us know, you're on track, keep doing this, you should be there as long as your implementation is ongoing. And so, but we cannot call them at this time for, to monitor a standard for compliance.
Regarding the work that we've already done this fall semester with your standard leaders on the ground with the Bailey Group, will any of that work or data be a part of the evidence presented?
Yes, it's, it's a big part of the evidence. It's part of your policy IDB on your enforcement process for accountability and accreditation requirements. The district has an internal monitoring process in place. They had it last year. And that's a lot of the initial work that I did was looking at that internal monitoring and what was going on with that. One thing we saw immediately was that the form said compliant, non-compliant, or partial compliant. And that partial compliant misconcept was, was a barrier to reaching full compliance because you're either compliant or you're not. It's not a little bit, it's a whole thing.
And Dr. Harrison, when they begin to monitor the standards for compliance, most schools, well, let me say this, all schools have binders or artifacts related to standards. I assure you, any school that you visit and you ask them about a particular standard, depending on what that standard is, they will be able to produce for you that standard in, in terms of a binder depending on what that standard is. And so, the artifacts and the rooms of evidence, that's pretty much at the school level. The things that relate to central office, you know, we're keeping those artifacts here.
And when MDE visits the schools and examines the evidence, do they talk with teachers or staff or parents, or do they only look at the binder?
It depends on the standard and what the instrument requires for compliance.
Just as a follow-up on gathering the artifacts, the evidence, the documentation of compliance, we used the six hundred-plus-page monitoring resource document from the MDE and trained on those documents and the standard checklist and the blue bricks that go with those checklists.
And remind me one time again, and how will we know that your training was effective? We, we just have to wait to see if?
That's the, that's the internal monitoring process that the district is doing and, and coordinated with the standard leaders.
Can you describe that process for us, please? Just tell us.
I don't like, Doc, I don't really get, I just look at the reports that come in. Dr. Merritt deals with implementing that process.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Johnson, tell me.
So, tell us what that department looks like, how many people work in it, that kind of thing. How does that work, the internal monitoring process? Is that, is that the internal auditor?
So, so it's standard-specific. So, for example, if we look at exceptional ed, special education, there's a required expertise even, I wouldn't consider myself qualified actually to, you know, you could do a checklist, but there are specific things that you need to be able to speak to to know if related services are being provided and, and other things related to an IEP. And so, as it relates to that, it takes the skilled individuals and which our executive director, Director of Special Ed, Ms. Bingham, she has a team that monitors that for compliance. So, it just depends on what the standard is. It may require one person, multiple people, and many times it may cross over into other areas.
And when will we be informed about that assessment? To answer the, my board member's question, how does the assessment work? When it's assessed, what's?
So.
Where does that go? Does it come to us? Do, I read somewhere we get monthly reports.
Right, so what happens and with the, now, the month report that you receive from Bailey just tells that the, the support that they have provided and the guidance that they have given. And when we meet as a team, those individual standard leaders are responsible for collecting their artifacts and their monitoring instruments and holding them on file.
But we also, if I could add, we, we also have, we've, we have a compliance department this year, which is something that we've not had. There are some standards that are not as technical that you can go out and check a box to see if, do you have a professional development plan? You know, have you done fire drills and tornado drills? So, we have, we've, we have a team now that does that on a regular basis. And so, they are an, we provided an internal process by which they report out. We talked about that before. They have, if a group is non-compliant, they report that to the standard leader. They have three to five days to correct that. The compliance department goes back out to follow up. And so, that, that has served us well, as well, as another layer of, of support within the district.
Now, in assessing through your internal monitoring system, I've not seen anywhere in the over thousand pages we've read over the last couple of days. I might have missed it. But I haven't seen anywhere any explicit mention of, and I ask this question because MDE cited an appalling number of errors in our data. Is there anywhere in the work that's been completed and moving forward in the documentation that tires any of our planning and strategies to staff performance review and evaluation through this whole process?
And I think when you mentioned citing the numerous, the errors, and I think you're relating that to accreditation policy two, two point one, which is having licensed staff. And so, when we look at if we have two hundred and sixteen vacancies, that's going to present approximately that many errors. And so.
Actually, I was referring to incorrect data. I read lots of places, you know, what we reported to the management system, they didn't find on the district, what the salaries reported weren't true. It was just amazing. And we, if children did that kind of work in school, we'd have them in the juvenile justice system by now. I was just a.
Let me clarify that just, just a little bit. And we've been working diligently with Dr. Sargent's office on the personnel edit reports. And there are some challenges in the district to keep all the data complete and accurate at all times because there's a lot of turnover.
And staff.
And staff. There, there's a lot of turnover, teachers.
Well, that's something else we need to study.
And also, there's a lot of reassignment of staff. There's a lot of movement of students. There's a lot of schedule changes.
So, the Bailey Group, knowing that, you will make recommendations to address that? Or do you just, you just tell them that's what's happening?
Yes, we've, we've explained to them that these are the challenges. There's also a gap between all the consistent information from the time the board approves a contract, when the data's entered in the system, accounting, payroll, school board minutes, and then the, the personnel reporting process. So, all of that has to align for how many employees in the district?
Four thousand.
Yes.
And have we made progress on that? We've had?
Yes.
Yes.
The whole fall semester.
Yes, you made significant progress on that. One of the first things we did over the summer was find the old data manual and get that updated to give specific guidance to everyone who handles data on whose job it is to do what and when.
And what about the turnover issue?
The turnover issue is ongoing, as I understand it, and the schedule changes are ongoing.
But you think by updating the manual, that has mitigated the turnover issue?
Not the turnover issue. That manual directs on who enters which data when and how.
Yeah, there was some, yeah, I think the, the reporting inaccurate data, I think was a big piece of the work and we feel confident that's been resolved. Some of the issues that, that we will still have challenges is not having certified staff, which is, is a compliance and an issue. And so, if we don't have the certified staff, you have them or you don't. But the, the audit was full of inaccurate reporting things that were not accurate, salaries that were not correct, those kinds of things. We've aligned the work. We've, our Emsys department is more aligned. We have a, kind of a better handle on who's putting that data in at the school level. We've done some very deliberate things in organizing that department so we don't have those kinds of errors. And, and we found the evidence of that is the success that we've had in some of our reporting so far this year. It shows us that we're, our practices are much better. So, there are some indicators that, that what we've done, what we've put in place is, is successful.
I'm heartened to hear that because one of my concerns, and, and I have one more question about the timeline. When you give a timeline for implementation, is that when it's supposed to start happening on that date? Or it will be in process by that date or be completed by that date? Because this is good news that you're telling me you can see some improvement in the, in the data. And that, to me, would bolster any report you produce to show that you have analyzed your data from this semester, which informs why you say X, Y, and Z is going to happen in January or February. So, I'm, I'm encouraging the, the district to, to lift up what you've tried, to adjust the data and it's working and show how that informs moving forward.
So, as, as it relates to the implementation, it's immediate. We're not waiting to implement once we, and many things started day one of school as relates to the implementation, those things that we had insight on. At times, guidelines changed over the summer. We had to monitor and modify some of the things that we had in place previously with some standards. But the implementation, what we know as best practices, we began day one. I think it's also important to note that in many of our internal monitoring instruments, we have gone above and beyond in developing a, a monitoring instrument to ensure that we meet compliance because we realize although there was one that has been provided, there was more needed in order to ensure that we, we meet compliance with some specific standards.
So, getting back to Dr. Murray, you said that we've had some successes and I was wondering whether those successes, we know about those successes through the audits from the compliance office?
Well, actually through, for example, Dr. Sargent, can you, can you, can you come up for a second? I'd just like Dr. Sargent to speak specifically to what I mean when I, when I say that. We've, when we, we have to transmit data, but I, I don't want to mess that up.
Well, he's coming, so, so big wins from the district were buying all the buses.
Got you, yeah.
For, for transportation.
Exactly.
Another one was your enrollment process. You did a very thorough enrollment of every student to verify that every piece of paper was there. So, the district has some big wins on some certain standards.
Got you. But specifically with the data reporting to, to get to your point, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Sargent can speak to that and how we've addressed that and how we, we see some different results than we've seen in the past.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For you that haven't met, my name is Jason Sargent. I do serve as Executive Director for Research Evaluation and Assessment. Much of the data reporting is what my department has a responsibility now of monitoring, not only our reporting of student achievement data from test results, but as well as our student data that goes into our student information system. We transmit that data to the State Department on a monthly basis. Our students' attendance, their demographic information, their suspension data, all of that is submitted to the State Department on a monthly basis. Our personnel data is also submitted to the State Department on a monthly basis. Staff positions, staff salaries, the time that they've worked in the district, the various positions that they work in. And so, that information is submitted to the State Department on a monthly basis. So, on a monthly basis, we have to monitor that data to make sure that it's submitted accurately. And so, the reports that you mentioned earlier from the State Department show that we have some inaccurate data that was being reported, which is a violation of the accreditation policy two point one. Process standard two is a standard that deals with personnel. Ms. Sandra Lyons is the standard leader for that. And that's what deals with our personnel and whether or not our hiring processes and the people that we're hiring and the way we're prorating salaries and that information that you saw in the report. But because we had challenges in that area and that information has to be transmitted to the State Department, then that caused a problem with accreditation policy two point one. So, accreditation policy two point one and process standard two, we have to work together to make sure that all of our data that we're sending, student data and personnel data, is accurate.
And so, I'm assuming based off of the responses from MDE, when we transmit that data, we've had less errors and so that shows our success?
Yes, ma'am. We, we, we get error reports at the end of every month. So, when we trans, we transmit data month one, and for our school district, month one is a combination of August and September. When we transmit that data, there are reports that we can run in Emsys, which is the state's system. Our system is SAM. That's where we put our, it's called a student information system. That's where we house all of our student and personnel data. And then, we also enter personnel data directly into Emsys. That system belongs to the state. So, anytime the state wants to know anything about our district or if anybody wants to do a records request from the state about our district, that's where they pull the data from. And so, that's why they're so adamant about that data being accurate because if someone asks them for data about any school district in the state of Mississippi, Emsys is where they're going to pull it from. And so, if districts are sending inaccurate information, that's going to put the State Department in a position to pass out inaccurate information to whomever requested. So, that's why that policy is in place for the state to make sure that we're reporting accurate information so that when they're asked, they report accurate information. So, on a monthly basis, when we report that, we have processes and procedures in place in my department where we go through and we look at the data to make sure that we don't have any errors. And then, when we do find those errors, we have to work with schools or we have to work with our payroll office or we may have to work with our human resources office or we may have to work with all three to get those errors corrected so when we transmit the next month, those errors are not there. And so, that's a year-long process for us. It did really, our data reporting as far as student and personnel data starts in January and then we report all the way through the year up until December, which is like right now. And so, once we submit our December data, then the State Department takes what they call a snapshot. They take a snapshot of our data, they pull it out of Emsys, they look at our reporting and they, and they see if we are truly reporting accurate data. And so, what they don't want to find when they pull our data, some of the inaccuracies that you mentioned is, if we have an employee that resigned in August, then we should not still be reporting that employee as active in our system in October because they left in August. If we do that, then we're in violation of transmitting false data. If we have a kid that transfers from our district If we have a kid that transfers from our district in August to Clinton, and we're still claiming that kid has enrolled in October at Jim Hill, then we're transmitting false data to the State Department. So anytime we send information that's not correct on a monthly basis from our system to their system, then we're in violation of that policy.
Thank you.
Do we have any more questions?
Can I make one more comment?
Mm-hmm.
Since the beginning, we've, I mentioned the weekly summer reports we did, but we also do monthly or periodic overall summer reports that address the progress and recommendations for next steps, what else needs to be done.
And help me understand, the information you passed out regarding the first 100 days, what of these items, under immediate instructional actions and immediate operational actions, which of these will the Bailey Group be involved in in leading the professional development and overseeing that?
This is for your information only. This is not a part of standard 20 contract or the CAP contract. This is our best minds put together in a group to give you some concrete areas to focus on as you do the corrective action plan, and to have a strategic plan on getting qualified teachers in the classrooms, or getting specific supports in there for those long-term substitute teachers, and focusing on the data that the district is doing, using that data to make those decisions and prioritize where the most intensive work needs to be done, to help improve student learning and your academic outcomes, to hopefully move the district from the F to the D in the next round of state assessments.
So it's in your estimation, your recommendation, that the district do these two pages of items by January 16th, is it?
Well,
What's the timeline? You're recommending that these things be accomplished by the district by January, by the date when the CAP is due?
Move urgently on these recommendations, yes, ma'am.
And none of these things were addressed at all over the last nine months?
I'm sure they were. This is a prioritized, intensive look at where to focus your resources right now.
Well, we have focused a considerable amount of resources already. That's why I was hoping that you could tell me that some of these things had been done. But it's December the 5th, and we are instructing the district to do a yeoman's amount of work.
I think it might just be a matter of different words.
One comment. The 100-day contract that we had on the five middle schools, we laser-focused many of these issues.
Oh, so you've done this already?
Many of these items in those five schools, we have worked on. That's what we do every day.
Excellent. Now, is the board able to see that? Is the board able to see that?
You will see it by the results of how those students perform.
I can't go to all five middle schools. When are we going to see some, we can read this, these are your results, but you can't put results for us to read about the district. I'm operating with a sense of urgency here. What can you show us other than district do more work? I want to see what another example of the good work that's been done.
Well, we give the district reports regularly on everything we do. So we brag on the good things that are going on in those five schools, and we give specific recommendations on things that need to change to get better performance. That's, you get work reports for every day our company does, and it goes to the district, and the district deals with those as they see fit. So it's not our job to tell you what to do with them. We give specific advice, and we lead them. We're there to give examples and to show people how to succeed. That's what teacher coaches do. That's what leadership coaches do. And that's what we're recommending. That's the core of our recommendations, is that, that's the tip of the iceberg. You have so many needs in this district. Data is just the tip of it. Supporting teachers, supporting leaders. Those are things that have to go much farther if you're going to get where you want to go. That's our advice. We think you have made great impact on those five middle schools, and I think you're going to see the results, and you can get the results by seeing the reports that we've already generated.
Thank you. Any more comments from the board, questions?
I have a question. A question earlier was asked about how we would evaluate the CAP contract that you have. I think one very easy bright-line test is whether or not the CAP is approved in February.
It's a pretty big one.
How confident are you that the CAP will be approved in February?
Well, it would not be unusual for the Department of Education to have some recommendations. That would not be unusual. That most of the caps that are being developed, and I believe there are about 18 districts developing caps right now, they have, they're only dealing with one, two, or three standards. Y'all are dealing with nearly 30.
So what does that mean, when you say they will have recommendations? Does that mean the CAP will not be approved? It will be provisionally approved?
That's why Dr. Merritt is wanting to get this CAP approved by the board in December, to sit down with MDE and get some direct feedback on whether or not that has been sufficiently addressed.
So they're going to address it before they address it?
That, Dr. Merritt?
As it relates to technical assistance, and we want to get board approval, of course, in December, second meeting, so that we can move forward in submitting it to MDE. The thing, and the thing that I want to focus in on, let me go back to the timeline. After the February 15th approval that we're praying for on, for the corrective action plan, we have from that time to mid-April to clear standards because of test, state testing beginning. And it's important that we don't want our buildings interrupted with people coming to monitor standards. And understand, as Ms. Moore said, we're talking approximately 30 standards that they will come and monitor in the district. If that process is delayed, that interrupts school in many aspects. So it's our goal, and they, if, once we submit it to MDE, they will begin to review it and provide feedback on anything we need to do to make sure we have state board approval by February 15th. As Dr. Murray said, we have open lines of communication with them. They're being very supportive and providing very valuable insight. We have a standing call that we do with the Office of Accreditation now. We established last week on Fridays, just to make sure, touch bases, making sure that we're getting the technical assistance, and to make sure that we're on track to getting this approved.
And we're going to have a draft of the CAP this Friday, you're saying?
Right. It will still be rough, but it will be a draft.
Please do.
So back to the question about whether or not you think the CAP will be approved. What does "with recommendations" mean? Does that mean approved with recommendations? Does it mean we're back in the cycle of writing additional corrective action? What is, because
It will be a cycle of rewrites until we get a really good document, and Dr. Merritt can sit down with the MDE staff and get some feedback. Some of it might just be wordsmithed. Some of it could be that, well, we really think you ought to add this.
I understand that process. I think it's a good one. On February 15th, when the vote goes down, are we going to be able to move forward?
It won't go to the board, and it won't go to the State Board of Education unless the Office of Accreditation is recommending approval.
Okay, so when it goes to the Office of Accreditation, what's, in your professional opinion, where are we? What will happen?
We'll get feedback. There might be some recommended changes here or there.
And what's the date of that we would get feedback? That's January the 16th?
And Dr. Sebag, I think I understand where you're going now. And I will say this, I'm confident that we have developed a policy, a process, or a procedure to address all standards in order to meet approval by the state, of the State Board of Accreditation. First, the Office of Accreditation, but we have, I feel that we are in the process of thoroughly addressing every standard in order to meet that, that goal.
And you have data that supports the legitimacy, or the high quality, or the effectiveness of your policies and procedures? You have data to back that up?
Yes, ma'am, depending on the standard.
No, I got you, yeah.
We have the artifacts in place, as standard leaders are to collect artifacts to support that their standard is in compliance.
Do I hear further questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Dr. Murray, do you have any final comments regarding your report on agenda?
No, just that we are, as Dr. Merritt and Bailey has mentioned, we are very confident that we'll be able to submit a corrective action plan that will receive approval from MDE as a result of the work that is, has gone on and that's currently going on. We're confident that that will take place, and we'll be able to clear those standards after approval.
And, so you don't see, the time you have left, you can get this done?
Well, the work, much of the work is done. We've been working on this for about 12 months. So this is, again, we're doing edits, we're looking at different things that we can do better. We're making sure that, again, the, putting it in a plan is not the heavy lift. It's making sure that when MDE comes in for compliance, that we're properly implementing. And so we, again, we feel confident that we will be able, that we have a plan already, and that when we complete the plan, when it's in final form, that it will be such that there may be some edits that will need to take place once it goes to MDE, but we feel confident that we will have a quality plan that will be approved. And again, we are, we're not working in isolation. The technical assistance that's being provided with MDE, the expertise that's coming from our support partners give me the confidence that we'll be able to provide something that will be quality, and that will be approved.
Dr. Murray, so I've heard you say it, I've heard Dr. Merritt say it. Again, I didn't get full, I didn't get the same comments from the Bailey Group that we feel confident that we're going to have a corrective action plan that will be submitted on the 15th. And am I interpreting that wrong?
I think you're interpreting incorrectly.
Okay.
There's going to be an editing process internally in the district. We're working on the first draft. We should have a second draft by Friday. There's going to be a third draft before we get it like it needs to be. Then the next step will be for Dr. Merritt to work with MDE to put that on the table and get their feedback as to, because that meets the requirements they're looking for. And they most likely
Let me give you this. So
And then once the Office of Accreditation is satisfied that the plan is in approvable form, then they will recommend it to the State Board of Education in February.
Right. So as someone who's been working in the district for many, many months, do you, are we going to get it approved?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to, I wanted to hear you say that.
But it's a process. It's a, it's a process.
I understand that, okay.
And I'm going to add, they're not going to walk in with a rubber stamp and say, way to go, y'all did great.
Oh, of course.
They're going to have comments, and there'll be a process to continue that. At some point, they're going to clear Jackson Public Schools. We have to do that. And it doesn't stop on February 15th. It's an ongoing process, and you have to implement. You have to continue to implement, and that's a job that educators have to do every day.
Dr. Merritt, who edits the documents?
Well, it's
Who's going to be sure that the final document is clean, that it has any errors in it, no misspellings, that the words maybe don't stop in the middle of a sentence?
The team will be responsible for that. We have standard leaders that are responsible for their specific standard. Beyond that, we have other individuals, excuse me, other individuals that will take a look at the document before it goes to MDE.
That's an internal, we don't need Bailey Group to do that.
Well, they're a part of the team. They'll take a look at it, just as Ms. Moore mentioned. She, once we submit to her information, she looks at it, provides feedback. Some of that involves editing. It involves semantics, and so she pushes that back out to us, and we do that. But ultimately, the entire team, we have meetings every Wednesday. The entire group comes together to look at the document in its totality. So we will continue to do that. We'll look at this document hundreds of times. There are many eyes that will see it before it's in its final stage. So ultimately, the team will be responsible, and then ultimately, me. I'm responsible for providing a product to MDE that meets the approval, of course, of the board, and you'll see it, of course, before it goes to MDE.
Speaking of which, we'll need to discuss more about when we'll receive it. I'll hold that for our later discussion. Anything else, Ford? Okie dokie. We will move on to item eight on the agenda information items only.
We don't have any.
I didn't think we had any. Thank you. Okie dokie. Item nine, information action items. We have one listed. We'll start with A, and then we will add our second one, the discussion of the Bailey Group contract. Dr. Bingham? How are you?
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening.
The Office of Exceptional Ed Services is requesting the board to approve the title change from program coordinator to assistant special ed supervisor. This goes along with the process of getting our data correct. This title is in the Emsys system, so it goes along with Dr. Sargent's standard, where he says his work with different departments. We're trying to align to make sure that we're 100% compliant in personnel accreditation.
I have a couple of questions. So this title change, will it, does, what effect does it have in terms of the salary, promotional range, duties, responsibilities, those kinds of things?
It does not. The duties, the salary remains the same. It's just actual title change for, to match up with Emsys.
Okay, and promotional range, an issue has come up before, and the title was shifting from teacher to administrator, and there were significant differences?
This is administrative position. It will, as a program coordinator, was administrative position, so it will remain the same.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is this position currently filled?
Yes, ma'am. Well, we have two vacancies. These positions are separated as in with the areas. So we have a vacancy in Area Two, and Area, well, Area Three and Area Four. I currently have Area One and Two covered, and those, as their formerly known coordinators, are managing those areas as well.
And I guess it's ongoing. You're looking for someone to fill this spot?
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed in the job description of the assistant special education supervisor, there didn't seem to be much expectation that the person holding this position would have any experience in the use of online technology and practice on computers. And with, I've learned recently, there's so much emphasis and a lot of money being spent on providing computer programming for students.
And it might not have been listed on here, and we might need to add that, but this person, they actually are the ones who provide support to the administrators and the teachers on every program that we have. They attend all the trainings as far as with C's, any rethink programs, so they are the people that are called out to provide support to the administrators and the teachers.
Well, I would like for you to think about adding that piece
Okay.
into the job descriptions of all of them. I don't know what the policy is on that, but given so much money and time being spent on having our children be engaged with computers and online instruction, it's important that we have trained we have trained folk who know how to do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Further questions for Ms. Bingham? Do I, do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
All in favor, it's been properly moved?
I need a second.
I'll say.
Oh, second, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we have approved information action item A. Our information action item B to have a discussion of the continuing of the Bailey Group contract. I'll, you want to start the discussion at all? Or I will just say that I think it's clear from our, our questions here tonight that we are concerned about the outcomes of that contract. And I'd like to hear some discussion on it.
Like I said at the last board meeting, my concern is the clearance of standards. And I feel like this process, we have no guarantees that standards are going to be cleared. I felt, I feel like if it was, the process was broken down and at least our policies were cleared, and then we can move on to whatever's next in that, the flow of that work, at least we know we're working from the right policy instead of working a corrupt process. Because if the policy's wrong, then the whole process will then be corrupted. I, I, I don't know. That's my biggest issue.
I think along those lines, in the meeting we had this week with the Council of the Great City Schools, one of their primary recommendations in contracts like these is that we have an accountability, accountability for results clause. And I think that that's particularly important here.
Yeah, I think so too. And I am concerned about the lack of accountability and assessment around the services that they do deliver in our schools and classrooms. I say that because I have no information on that. I have no data. I have no minutes from a meeting, nothing to say about what was taught, who taught it, how it was received, how many people were there, what they learned, how they used it. It's very difficult to, to shell out this kind of money with no data. That's my concern. And do we know, Dr. Murray, how much money has been allocated to the Bailey Group up until this point? And council may ask that question in open session. Because it's very difficult to determine from the contracts that we received, what's current, what's the compensation rate, what's the scope of services. It was very difficult to follow the written trail of evidence as to what is going on and what it is costing the district. So if someone could share that with the board, it'd be very helpful in making our decisions.
Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Murray, members of the board. If I can recall the numbers off the top of my head, there are two, again, two contracts that are completely separate. One was awarded to the Bailey Group for standard 20, and as Dr. Murray indicated, that was an RFP that was competitively bid. We do have two companies that are providing supports into the schools. So there was one with Bailey and there was also one with Green Education. That contract for standard 20 with the Bailey Group was worth $145,000.
That's standard 20?
Yes ma'am. The contract with the cap, which is the second contract to date, I want to say $95,000 and some change. And so those are the two separate contracts. But again, as Dr. Murray said, when we went through the RFP process, Bailey Group was awarded the contract to do the five schools for their area, and then there was another vendor that was awarded for contracts to do in a different area. So there was a competitive process for that. For the cap, it was also competitively bid back early spring when we first started this process. So that's, a total, I think it's 326,400, I want to say this off the top of my head. But it's 326 total to the Bailey Group for both sets of contracts.
Now, according to the documents I received, four, three, four, one, two, three, four, PDFs and award document, Bailey contract, RFP, September 17, Bailey Education Group executed, executed amendment, Bailey Group contract, Bailey Group Second Amendment. All of these had money totals with it and it comes more than $326,000. So I'm wondering where the discrepancy is.
No.
That's my math.
Well, what, you asked me for, what has been spent? And so that's what I was giving you, what has been spent.
Well, I, I appreciate that and thank you for making that clear. But I also would like to know what's in the contract that we've committed to.
I don't have that off the top of my head because I don't have the contract specifically, but I can certainly pull each one of them, or district council can provide those to give you the total amount that's allocated. I do know the one for 145 has been completed. That one is completely paid. I cannot tell you about the different amendments for the cap support. Again, I don't necessarily receive all of those contracts in totality. So between myself and district council, we can certainly provide those contracts to you so that you can see the total allocated amount for this contract.
We, we've provided that, board members, as you know, that was in the email Friday.
So then, the difference of about $94,000, that's still outstanding?
I don't believe.
Well, that's why I'm asking you, what I read and what I added, that's what it comes to. That's why I need help.
Well, we, we would, we can look at the contracts and give you a, a number. I would, I would not, you know, venture to guess, but the, the information that we provided earlier was the, the funds that have been spent, have, have been spent to this point. And so that was, but again, we can, the contracts have the total amount.
Yeah, please provide the total amount of the contracts.
Yes ma'am.
Because that's what we'll have to pay.
Yes ma'am.
Other comments, questions from the, from the board?
I think, uh, one of our desires as a board was to have the opportunity to engage with the Bailey Group and we appreciate y'all being here tonight. And so I, I'm, I would just, I guess one thing I would ask from the board, how many days left do we have on the amendment that we approved last week?
Have we, have we, have we used any of those days?
We need to know. The contract was fully executed on December 1? And so how many days have you worked since December 1?
We worked over the weekend on the data for reporting the personnel report. Ellen Burnham is leading that and she has been back and forth on emails with the district constantly on how to clear up errors on those reports. Ms. Andrews and I have worked on review of the corrective action, the new corrective action plan and provided that. So I don't have a total number of days since December 1, so it would have been work completed since then. So I'm sure we're going to run out of days, just as we, we did on the first contract from April to June 30th. That contract was renewed for three more months at no additional charge because we were dedicated to helping the district get those corrective actions implemented and get through that audit process for the district. So there were no dollars added on that, that particular contract.
And can you remind me what's going to happen in the next 20, how many days that we don't know yet that you're going to be working, what will be happening?
The majority of the work is going to be on the cap. Reviewing, analyzing, helping district make corrections to the cap, making sure that it's aligned to the citations. That's the type of work. And Ms. Burnham is continuing to monitor the data on a daily basis. I think, I lost count of the email she had today on responding to the district. We'll be working tomorrow with the standard leaders. We'll be meeting individual with standard leaders. So we have three people working intensely with a total of 20 days. They're, they're going to burn up fast, but.
And so the 20 days are going to extend past December 19th?
Yeah, we'll, we'll work through the 28th, but we're putting in more hours.
So you won't be finished before you need our board recommendation that your work is going to be quality and good? That's what, is that what I'm understanding?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand.
We have to approve a cap. You're asking us to approve a cap before your contractor's finished telling you the best way to improve the cap? Is that, I don't understand that. It's because that we're going to submit it and then they're going to be working with us to, to make errors or fix errors?
We will have given you all of our professional advice for those 20 days in a proper amount of time for you to complete the plan. I mean, that, that's what you've asked us to do, is to help you complete the writing of the plan to get turned in to MDE. We're not walking away from you. I guarantee you, there'll be more days that we're giving to you because of our commitment to this. We're, we're going to follow through. If you need help with MDE, we're going to continue to be there. If it becomes elaborate and you need more days, the implementation of this plan is the responsibility of the district. We can only advise you what to do.
Well, I'm, I'm just, you know, before I vote on anything, I'd like to know what it is I'm voting, I want to understand fully. We, it is my understanding that we have to give board approval at our meeting on December 19th.
Of the cap.
Of, which is what you are working on now, the cap.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But you won't be finished helping the district by December 19th.
No, we will continue to work to the end of the contract date on whatever service you need.
20 days you'll work. But you're going to say you're going to work for free more than 20 days?
We have worked for free for the follow-up.
We're not going to walk away. Trust me, it's just not going to happen. By the time you approve at your December meeting, the, the draft of the plan, we will probably be through 12, 14 days out of the 20. So there's still some contract days left for us to do. But again, I, I would guarantee you that that's well over 30 days you're getting for the cost of 20. And I, I don't say that lightly, that's just what we do. We do it because it's what needs to be done. You've got a mountain of things that have to be done and we're trying our best to help the district get there.
It seems to me, Madam President, that per Dr. Sevax's earlier questions, the primary assurance that we're looking for, that we really need, is that we're going to get a cap approved by MDE. And what assurances are there in this contract? And, and is there any kind of results-oriented assurances that if that isn't approved, what happens?
Thank you, Dr. Luckett. So, to that point, do you recall anything in your contract that speaks to these issues that the board is bringing to you now?
Let me speak about the cap plan first and then I'd like to address the other 100-day contract, the standard 20 contract. The cap plan is an advisory contract. We do not implement those standards. We give very clear and some very hard advice on what does it take to do that. And, and your district has been great to work with. They, they answer hard questions, they deal with difficult issues. Somebody's got to implement that. You're not paying us to implement that cap plan. We would have to put many, many people on staff to do things that you're already paying people to do. We're helping you do that. That is an advisory contract. And we feel very strongly that we're going to get there and it's going to be approved. As I stated earlier, it's not on this date you're approved, it's going to take some time to get there. We're not walking away, we're going to be there to help you get there by our relationships with MDE and advising you. But if you ask me to guarantee, is that cap going to be approved, there's no way on earth I could do that because you have to implement that cap plan.
That, yeah, it's very.
The implementation takes place between the January 16th approval and July 31st, right? That's the next stage. What we're asking is, we've got to get the cap approved first.
Get the cap approved. And, and during that process, you, you still will be working for us for free through July 31st advising?
Not, not, not to that extent. I, you know, when we get to the point of turning in the plan to MDE and that 30-day process after that of helping answer questions from MDE, we're still there. Beyond that, that, that's another level of service. We're getting you to the point of an acceptable cap plan, as good as it can get, working with the district and our advisors to help you get there.
And if it's not accepted, then you'll produce another contract to, to try again, the third time?
It, well, i- if, if there's things that need to be corrected that are at implementation items, we would be glad to talk to you about those implementation items. But you have not asked us to do that. You have asked us to advise how to write this plan successfully with your staff. It's not to implement it. If you would like to discuss that, believe me, we, we're here to serve, that's our job. But if, if you're asking me to guarantee that that cap plan's going to be implemented successfully, there's no way I can do that. You have to do it.
Well, it doesn't have to be implemented in January and February.
I understand that.
So why are we there? We're talking about it being approved based on your advice.
And, and we feel confident that it will, but we.
And if it's not, what's next?
We're going to help you get it revised to get it there.
Free of charge?
Yes ma'am.
For 30 days?
But that's not an open-ended contract forever.
For 30 days? That's what, that's what I want to know. I agree. That's why, let's just say what it is. So for 30 days, you'll keep working with us to try to get it approved if it fails?
It's not a fixed-end date. If, if there's revisions that need to happen, we will continue to help you with those revisions. Revisions of the cap plan, not, not the implementation of the cap. I think we're on the same page. It's just, we, we, we're not going to walk away. It may take 40 days. I don't know what it's going to take, but I'm not going to, there's not an open-ended door for implementation, only for helping you write the plan.
But to Dr. Luckett's question, there's nowhere in our contract that holds you to that?
It is not a, a guarantee the cap plan's going to be approved contract, no.
And you're working with us? That's just word of mouth here again, that's not in the contract either?
I'll be glad to amend the contract to say that we're not walking away. My, my word is pretty strong. I'll be glad to back it up and write it.
That would be helpful.
I understand that there can't be any assurance that the cap, absolute assurance that the cap plan will be approved by MDE, but the question I think for us is, if it isn't approved, what in the contract allows us recourse to keep moving forward with you guys to get this done?
It sounds like we could amend it to work on the plan until it is approved, is that correct?
Well, you have that, yes, if you choose to do that, but if there are basic, simple revisions during that process, we're not going to charge you for those. If, if, if MDE says what you have submitted and what you have done is not acceptable, the district has to correct those. We'll help advise you to get there until you get it done.
But I do think that needs to be into an amendment to the contract.
Be glad to do that.
Would somebody state it and at least, well, we're not there yet, are we there yet? To get an, at least amendment to the contract?
I would move that we get an amendment to the contract with the Bailey Educational Group that includes their willingness to continue to work with us until the cap is approved. Is that the?
I think that's the, the spirit of it. Does that make sense to the rest of the board member? You know, that's a part of the current contract with no additional cost.
The goal of this contract is to get a cap approved. We've got to get there first.
It's our goal too. I'm comfortable with that, sir.
But I don't want the district being in this situation, being pressed, getting documents laid and pushing the board to approve, 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 because we're not quite ready, but just approve it anyway, because one day it will be. That's not good business practice. We need things written in contractual form and, and, and require all of us to meet our, to meet our commitments. So that is my unease, dis-ease.
Well, we, we are, we're committed to not bringing you the cap until it's ready for approval. So we'll, we'll make sure that, that when it, when it comes to you, it's, when it comes it's in a, it's, it's in a format that's ready to be submitted. We're committed to, our timelines have been set to have that in place for you on next Friday, so they can go on, on the board agenda.
Madam President, I do have a motion on the table waiting for a second, I believe.
No, I was just going to say, logistically, I think Dr. Luckett is right in how you proceed. The board would have to authorize an amendment to the contract. So if Mr. Bailey is saying that he's amenable to executing a contract with an amendment, that I've stated we would add a provision that they would continue to provide the consulting and advisory services up until the, at no additional cost, up until the time that the cap is approved by the Mississippi Board of Education. If there's a motion to that effect for the board to approve that amendment to the contract, we can draft it and then send it over to the Bailey Group for their execution. And it would be in place so that the work could continue.
And I'm so moved.
Let me ask one more question. I don't know if you have to remove the motion to ask a question? Would you be willing to take the payments left on the balance of the days and use that, pay those upon approval of a cap?
Sure.
Okay, let's.
Wait, explain that to me.
So there are remaining days for which we've contracted. And they are open to withholding payment of those days until we have an approved cap?
To also revision to the payment provision?
Yeah, and I would add that that's days that haven't been worked yet.
Correct, no, that's correct.
We will not bill for those until the cap plan is approved. I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
It's not normal, but we're here to help you succeed.
No, thank you very much.
That's very good. We appreciate your understanding, our sense of urgency. And to Dr. Merritt and your team, and we appreciate how difficult this is and everybody is under the spotlight. But we, I don't want to receive what your team perceives to be the final draft, you know, shortly before we're expected to vote on it. I would rather see interim updates, this is what we change, summary reports. Because if I get 600 pages less out of board policy at a time we're supposed to receive materials, it's going to be very difficult to approve. So you've got to get us this information early enough.
Madam Chair, can I make one piece of advice? We would be glad to sit down in a work session with y'all and go through each one of these items. We have all of the data on earth of every single one of them. And I could cover you up, but you don't want to be covered up. You want summary data of what's going on. We have all of that and we'd be glad to share it with you. It's not hidden information.
Well, we've been asking for that, but.
Well, and it's the first time I've met you folks.
Everybody seems really, really busy.
We have to work through your administrators and that's our job. And we'd be glad to work with you in a work session and let the superintendent set that up. That would be, we would recommend that as far as that goes.
Well.
You're playing catch-up on a process.
No, actually, I'm very familiar with accreditation standards. I'm playing catch-up and reading this document, but I fully understand what's going on here. But I'm just saying again, if our next board meeting is on the 19th, we're going to need whatever it is we're supposed to vote on seven days in advance.
Madam President, I still have a motion on the table waiting for a second?
Yeah, Dr. Luckett, I think if you would allow an amendment to your motion to include the proposed change to the payment provision that Dr. Sevak talked, then I think if you're agreeable to that amendment, the second could be to that. And then one motion would take care of everything.
Do I hear a second on Dr. Luckett's motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Right.
Aye, opposed? Thank you so much for that, Dr. Luckett, and.
We do not need the second amendment that you were suggesting just then. We've approved it.
No, we approved it.
It'll work out.
No, that's what she seconded, yeah, that's what she seconded.
Got my Robert's Rules of Order.
Now.
Those are actually only advisory. You don't have to follow them to the letter. What your policy says is that you'll follow Robert's rules of the, you may follow Robert's Rules of Order or your own Rules of Order.
Well, good.
Luckett's Rules of Order.
Madam Chair, can I give one comment on the other contract? Because y'all have asked for results and you've asked for expectations. The other contract has clear and specific goals of what's going to be achieved. And they're there as guides. And if we do not achieve those goals, we have committed to additional days for free to help you get to them. No one else is doing that. And I'm not trying to market you, I'm just telling you the truth. That's a big deal. Because we do not teach kids, we help y'all teach kids. And that contract was real clear to help you move your performance. And we're real serious about you moving your performance or we're not here to play. So I encourage you to get a copy of that contract and see those wordings because we're serious about them. And we want you to know what they are and we want to achieve them and expect to achieve them. That's why I'm here, that's why I'm in this business.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What is the role of the curriculum office on standard 20?
The curriculum office is ultimately responsible at the district level for standard 20. These consultants provide support with the curriculum office. But as it relates to the need to get support in math and in standard 20, you know, we have a curriculum office of about 18 to 20 people. So there's only so much they can do. So we've centralized their focus in areas as well.
Who's the director of curriculum?
The executive director is Mr. Brown.
Mr. Brown, who is Mr. Brown?
Bobby Brown, he was out there, I'm not sure if he stepped out.
He is over all the JPS curriculum?
He's executive director of curriculum.
And Dr. Cheryl Miller, you're going to review those Bailey contracts to make sure we're all on the same page in terms of money and.
I'll make sure that I have every one of them. And I will actually submit to you an analysis that shows, here's the contract, this is the total, this is what's been paid.
Thank you.
I'll do that for you.
History was my lane.
Yes, ma'am. Knocked the budget.
Okay, let's see how we're doing, team. We are moving to consent agenda items under finance, is that correct? Item A, approval of accounts payable and activity fund claims for the period November 18th through December 1, 27. Ms. Miller?
Thank you again, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Murray, members of the board. I present to you two items for consent agenda items finance. Item A is approval of accounts payable and activity fund claims for November 18th through December 1st. And also, item B is the approval of the option to extend bid number 3057 for frozen foods, frozen food, meat products, crackers and chips to Cisco of Jackson.
Our board has the report and request from Ms. Miller. Are there any comments or questions regarding approval of accounts payable?
I have a question regarding the board and the agenda item B in the bid for frozen food, meat products, crackers and chips. Just a simple one about the determination of those contracts as regard, in regards to the nutritional value for our students and what is offered in our schools in terms of healthy foods for all of our children as the most obese state in the nation. I understand the need to provide this as an agenda item, but it's a basic question for the board. What is our role in that and what do we know?
Dr. Luckett, what we have actually is, and I'm going to brag on Ms. Mary Hill, is probably one of the nation's experts in food service. She served on national committees, she's testified before Congress regarding the nutritional value of students and how our district meets those. I can assure you that we are very, very stringent on meeting the nutritional guidelines. So much so, couple of years ago, when we made a lot of the shifts, we had to encourage our students to embrace whole wheat pizza and baked items. We have a very, we have been a recipient of a number of federal grants to remove our fryers in our schools and we have replaced them with combi ovens. First, we started that process with, at that point, Mrs. Michelle Obama, who came and visited our district and awarded those grants to us. We spend an enormous amount of time ensuring that we are meeting the nutritional value from the 2% milk and the 1% milk to, again, the whole food pizzas, their tastings. Her staff does an outstanding job of making sure that we are meeting those nutritional requirements. We have expert staff on board. Ms. Hill is working with a, has a nutritionist on board and that can actually does an analysis of every menu item to ensure that they meet the federal requirement. So we feel very blessed and fortunate to have Ms. Hill with us for over 30 years and hopefully there will be another, at least while I'm gone, 30 more to ensure that our students are absolutely getting the quality that they are required to do.
Thank you.
I'm delighted to hear that. I think that's the same as Mary Hill that we work with following Katrina when JPS welcomed their doors when we were serving children and families who had been displaced. And she was wonderful helping us find food for those children. The district was very helpful in many ways in that crisis.
And Dr. Luckett has reminded me, we are a Gold Star Standard School District. So we are, we're very, very proud, extremely proud of our food service department.
Great. Any further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I had one question.
Yes, thank you.
It looks like we spent $109,000 given to green education?
Yes.
I just was curious, is this work towards the cap plan? I mean, towards cap?
No, that's, the only, the only group that we have that works toward the cap is Bailey. This is the RFP that we had to provide instructional support in those schools for, I believe, math? Math.
But it is work towards the standards then?
Yes, it's all work towards the standards, right.
It's all related to standard 20.
It's related to standard 20.
The focus is just in math.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda items regarding finance?
Still moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The items under 10 have been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work and excellent detail in that report. Thank you. It was good reading. Okay, item 11, consent agenda items general. First item, approval of amendment and the agreement between the Octagon Group LLC and the Jackson Public School District. Dr. Merritt?
I'll present this one. Good evening, the board, board president, board members. The administration is recommending approval for lobbying contract with Octagon Group. And the purpose of this is to advocate for the JPS during this year's session relative to the board's specific legislative agenda. Over the past few years, we've, of course, presented a legislative agenda. We've had different types of support as it relates to lobbying. We've had informational reports, we've had individuals within the system that have provided that kind of advocacy. But we've learned over the past couple of years that we need a presence to advocate for our district. We have unique situations within our system that need specific advocacy for us. So we're making this recommendation that you approve this request.
Do I hear comments or questions regarding the proposed contract with Octagon Group?
What budget line item will this come from?
This will come, Ms. Johnson, from the superintendent's professional service budget.
Any comments? I have a few, but I would yield to my comments.
My primary question is related to the conversation we had around Bailey Educational Group. What are the results? What are we expecting to get? What kind of accountability would we have here? And in the current climate in our state government, especially towards public education, what kind of success do we predict in lobbying in that regard?
Well, again, the board will, of course, we together will set the agenda for what we would like to focus on. But there are several issues that are currently in the, that are coming up this year, you know, that on both sides, whether it's, you know, regardless of your political standing. You know, we have average daily attendance is an issue as compared to average daily membership. Those are issues that are constantly up for debate. We have, you know, charter schools, we have conservatorship. There are different things that are in play that we are not, we are currently not a part of and don't have the knowledge of. And we think that that is to our detriment in many cases. And so we think that it's valuable to not only have someone there to bring us back information, which is a model we followed before, but to actually have a representation there advocating for our interests on both sides.
I, thank you, Dr. Murray. I embraced the concept of having a lobbyist for JPS. And I'm not opposed, I believe I read that this is a lobbyist that the city of Jackson is using as well. Is that correct?
Yes.
But my concern is, I have two or three questions. How did we find this particular group? Did we bid this out? And did you mean to send us an incomplete contract and job description? Because what I received was still in a, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't a finished contract. I don't know what the contract says.
I can address that, board members. And it is in your board material as an update. It did have tracking changes on it at the time of the board meeting because we had to wait to hear from the lobbyist as to the questions that needed to be answered to do the contract.
So we have a clean copy of what? It's in what material? Because this, I brought all this with me.
Okay, it's in the electronic board material.
The electronic board material? Well. Okay, I'm going to hold that point. Thank you, Terry Nelson. Well, I would entertain a motion to table this contract until we can discuss it and get some clarity. I have not read this. And did anybody answer the question about, do we bid this contract out?
I know it's professional service. We did not.
Professional service? So that's not required? I would welcome and entertain a table.
It's all moved.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, it's got to be properly seconded?
Let me say this. So we, so our organization has worked with the Octagon Group, the Hope Policy Institute. And we are currently not under contract with them. And I can attest to the quality of services they provide. At the same time, I think we need more information from a process perspective. You know, how, how did we arrive here? I mean, we just put another contractor under significant microscope. How did we arrive here? What are the, what's the process for, what's the history of approving this type of contract? Again, this doesn't speak to the quality of services that the Octagon Group provides. I think it's more a question of process for us as a board.
Do I hear a second to the motion to table?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we tabled the consideration or the approval of the Octagon Group contract until our next regular scheduled board meeting? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, tabling, item A is approved. Item B, approval of standard JPS professional service agreement with M3A architecture for renovations and improvements at Hughes and South Jackson Fields and at various schools. Do I hear comments? Questions? Well, I have a question. You know I got to have a question now.
We certainly welcome that.
I'm just curious, you know, you hear so much about artificial turf and the artificial turf that the young soccer girls are playing on and several of them died from cancer. And did I recollect, we're going to tear up the God-given grass and put down artificial turf? So help me, help me embrace this concept and tell me that artificial turf is safe nowadays and this is good for our children?
It is.
Tell me how.
A very quick answer, it is. The different types of materials certainly doesn't create where one scrapes their knees. And also, the backing or the sub-surface is a surface that helps absorb any kind of shock. So as of this date, it is deemed very safe. So as of this date, it is deemed very safe.
And the materials that this contractor will be using meet the highest standards?
That is correct.
In the industry, so we won't be on...
We wouldn't accept...
The news next year about, we got all the leftover artificial turf that nobody wanted anymore.
The... That is remained... This is with a different location. As a matter of fact, it was... The artificial turf was going to Newell Field, but due to structural conditions, we opted not to do it at that location and felt that it was best to do it at Hughes Field. So the artificial turf will remain in place until informed otherwise.
Is the long-term cost of the artificial turf going to save the district money as opposed to the maintenance of a grass field?
Yeah, good question.
I'm sorry, sir.
Is the long-term... In the long term, is the maintenance, the installation of the artificial turf going to save the district money in terms of what it costs in terms of maintenance of the grass fields?
Oh, absolutely. The man-hours in terms of cutting grass, marketing, marking the fields, it will cut down significantly.
What is the lifespan of the artificial turf?
We're looking at 12 to 15 years, and sometimes it can go beyond that. The present one, I believe, is 12 years old, 12, 13 years old. So the longevity is there.
The only question I have, Mr. McCracken, is in the contract, it appeared to me that there were three different kinds of costs outlined. One regarding the construction cost, one regarding the lead person, and I'm not the head contractor, I guess, 8% of the project costs, and then reimbursement costs. Do we have an anticipated ballpark figure of total project costs at this time? I realize that the reimbursement costs are incurred as they are paid as they are incurred, if I'm reading this contract correctly?
That is correct. The reimbursement cost is very minimal. In most cases, we hardly ever use reimbursement costs. Again, this particular contract is for the professional services to design. It is not the turf. It is to design the field to prepare for, to provide specifications, to put out to bid for a contractor to construct. So that's... Those are two different types of services.
So when it went to talking about construction cost and all that, that was above my head, is why I didn't understand that it wasn't a part of this contract?
No, it is not a part of this contract.
Okay.
This is strictly for professional services.
To get us to the point where we could do that?
Exactly, where we can bid it.
Great.
And we have established an accelerated timeline, although this is contingent. We certainly would like to go to bid January 19th and open the bids in February 15th, February 16th. So we have at least 90 to 120 days for construction, and then additional 30 days to monitor the project, make sure that it's completed according to our specifications.
We've got money in the budget to anticipate these costs and meet them.
That is correct. We have a total of... This all comes out of the limited tax notes, which was 2.5 million, and 1.5 of this is coming out of that. Ms., can you explain the limited tax note, what the purpose was for?
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Murray. So back in the summer, we looked at the opportunity that the district had to issue debt, basically, to do capital projects. At that point, the only opportunity we had were limited tax notes, because we have some limitations on GO bonds and the debt limitation there. So we presented that item to the board, and we were able to issue 2.5. We did a bid, of course, with the banks bidding on interest rates, and we were able to issue that $2.5 million worth of debt. That is included in the tax request, the Avalorm request that the district made to the city of Jackson when the budget was approved. What that did, basically, for our district as a whole, it increased the amount... We actually request a dollar amount to the city. We don't set meals, so we don't set the mileage rate. So what we do is we ask for a dollar amount, which increased about $236,000. And... But what that did is, in effect, once the city looked at the mileage rate again, because thankfully, the city is seeing some increase in assessed valuation. We did see a bump this year. So what that did effectively was increase the meals that the city put on to the taxpayers by .22. So it's a very limited amount of money that the taxpayers will see as far as an increase is concerned, but that's what that does for us. And so that allows us now to issue that $2.5 million strictly for capital improvements.
Great. Thank you for that. We've heard the discussion. Do I hear a motion to approve consent agenda item B, approval of the contract with M3A Architecture?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent decree, item...
Thank you.
11B passes. Consent decree. Okay. Item 12, any other items? Consent agenda items under personnel. Item 13, other business. I have a question.
Can we propose a date, week after next, for a work session? Monday perfectly, or Tuesday? Tuesday's a board meeting day, but... Or if we could find a date that... Or we can collaborate on it tomorrow, but I think we could...
Is there a board meeting next Tuesday?
Tuesday afternoon.
The 19th.
Yes.
Are you proposing which day?
Oh, that Monday.
December 18th.
December 18th.
The 18th.
Unless you all would just want to have an afternoon meeting and go directly into board meetings, so it won't be too... Whatever you all... Whatever your pleasure, but during that week, whenever.
When will we receive the materials if we select December 18?
I wouldn't... Well, depending on the... That's a Greenble board meeting.
Okay, no, sorry, that won't work.
If it was in the evening, I could do Tuesday.
Or if it was in the evening.
I couldn't do it in the evening. I'd have to be in Greenble by 5:00.
I think the idea is a great idea.
I could do it during the day.
Yeah, I mean, we'd do it during the day.
What's your timetable?
I'd need to be leaving between 2:30 and 3:00. So if it was in the morning through the afternoon, I'd be fine.
Do 8 to 1, 8 to noon?
I can't do mornings on Mondays. I have court every Monday.
By Wednesday?
What about Wednesday?
How does the afternoon look for people on Monday? Prior to...
The afternoon probably wouldn't give us enough time, I would...
If we did a lunch meeting, a lunch work session? Is that appropriate?
Well, probably, we need probably about four hours, I think, to... And you and I would have... We'd just get together, set the agenda.
And what is the purpose of this work session?
We've not had one, and I think it's evident that we need to kind of get together to talk about some things, and also to bring some items, cap, you know, other issues, I think, that need a little more time for us to work through. So, but again, we would work together as a board to set the agenda for the work session as well. But it just gives us a little more time to actually work. And then also, it's important, I think, there's a recommendation... Bailey made the recommendation, but of course, it's just... It's calling that boards. We get together to talk about the goals and the strategic plan for this specific board. And then also, whether we have a lobbyist or not, we still need a legislative agenda. I think all of those are things that we would need to talk about.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because in the materials we have tonight, the summary of findings, you mentioned standard 9, that we have a continuous strategic planning process. So that would be one of the things we would discuss, because I was glad to see that, that I haven't done that yet. Well, I don't know, we meet on Saturdays? What are we going to do, board? I don't want to be down here all day and all night, too, but I'll come whenever the board can meet.
But we could... Rosson could poll the board. We could... It's not something we have to resolve tonight, but just this short... And even if we can't make it work that week, then, you know, when we return.
Sounds like it would be preferable to do it ahead of the next board meeting.
Ahead of the next board meeting.
It would be.
Okay, so maybe even the previous week?
What about the 13th in the morning?
No, I'll be at MD for the next eight days.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Oh, my goodness, I gotta be next week.
We're down to the... Before the board meeting?
Wednesday was an option, Wednesday.
Wednesday after the board meeting?
The 13th?
Yes.
Or the 20th?
Yeah, I thought we needed to do it before we had the board on cap.
Oh, before the board meeting, yeah.
Well, can anybody come on the 19th before the board meeting?
I can be here then.
In the afternoon?
The afternoon.
I could be here then.
So what are we thinking? Give us some ideas, options for times. 12 o'clock?
We can do 12 to...
12 to 4?
12 to 4.
It's time to go home and come back? 12 to 4, board, on Tuesday, the 19th. God, I hope I got this right. It'll be the 19th, yeah. Does that look like it will work for everybody? I'm looking for nodding heads. Letitia, Andrea, Barbara? Okay, Tuesday, the 19th, from noon to 4. A work session. Okey-dokey. Any other business? Item 14, consideration to hold an executive session.
We don't have anything.
Well, you know, I was thinking. I'm kidding. Okay, hearing none. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Do we need a motion to adjourn? Or do I just get to do it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, JPS.